I don't have anything to say today. I doubt that.
I have two pages of notes.
You can go through those fast.
I've already given them to Blair.
It's the weather, I feel like. This weather just makes me in a bad way.
Oh, no. See, I like the rain because that means we don't have to worry about the snowpack so much.
Then fires this summer will be better if there's more rain.
Fingers crossed. Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. But the same thing is depressing to look at. Get up here, it rains, comes home and it's raining. It's always raining, especially today.
You know, when it rains like that.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Present.
Counselor Gerson?
Present.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
Counselor Gorley?
Here.
Counselor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Present.
Let the record show, we have seven present and no absent. At this time, we go ahead and do the online information.
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help if you are new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner indicated with the green arrow. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. Then, the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few moments now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask in the interest of time that people not repeat a previous speaker, instead state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson for the council rules. The moderator will note those joining by phone for the mayor/chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Okay, thank you. At this time, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. My roll call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Let the record show seven eyes, no nays, approval of consent agenda. Recognition of visitors, hearing of petitions, anybody who would like to come forward, be heard. Okay, moving on to old business. RCA, resolution number 12 for 2022. 2022 natural hazards mitigation plan adoption.
Thank you, Mayor. This staff, for the last year and a half or more, worked with some other agencies. It was a grant-funded program to put together an updated natural hazards mitigation plan. These, the last one we had expired, and this was the updated version. The, this plan is necessary if we want to be eligible for pre- and post-disaster mitigation grants from the federal government. So that was the purpose for having the plan in place. You have the plan in front of you. Counselor Gerson notified me of some errors that need to be corrected, and we will get those typos corrected. But essentially, what is needed at this time is a resolution adopting it, at which point the, we can send that off to FEMA and they can officially approve the whole thing. But if you have any questions about the process or questions about what's in the plan, we can address those at this time. Any changes to the plan, however, will require that it go back to FEMA for their approval.
Any questions, counsel?
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Blair, I noticed that the, it was suggested that the junior high school be the emergency center, but they don't have a generator. So I was, I thought that was kind of an interesting, rather than the city hall, which will have a generator, so. Anyway, I don't even remember what page that's on. But, oh, I think it's page 62 where it lists that.
I'll have to check on that because I did not think that that was the location we talked about for 62?
Yeah, page 62. I think it was suggested that it be the junior high.
I always thought it should be the city hall, actually.
Yeah, I'm seeing it now. That's... Hmm, I don't recall discussing that.
Would you, you don't either? Yeah, that, I think that's an error. Because I think we, we had talked about city hall being an emergency operations center, and that's one of the reasons why we were going to move forward with the generator for this site.
That's what I thought, yeah.
We'll, we'll see about having that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the thing, the thing that is, with the fires that we've had recently, and we've always met here, but if we have a situation where the power goes down, there's only one other place, two other places in town that I'm aware of that have generators. The phone company's one of them, and the fire district. So I think at this point, we might want to just use the fire department, the fire district's place, until we get a generator working here. And maybe we could put that on the side and say, it's eventually going to be here. Because I don't know how long it's going to take us to get the generator up and going. But if it's anything like last year with the fires and stuff, that could be pretty bad. So, I mean, just, just thinking about that.
Yeah, we'll get that feedback back to FEMA.
Any other questions?
I, I don't want to get too far off, but we were talking about purchasing a generator. And in the event of a, of a disaster, the fire department's going to be so busy. I don't know that we should tentatively plan on that, you know? I think, yeah, anyway, it's just a...
Go ahead, Judge.
How it's set up currently is the police department, this new generator would be the initial ETC. The fire department's set up as the secondary. And then, once our generator out back gets established for this building, we'll kind of move around where this building would be the primary ETC, followed by a secondary.
Thank you.
Well, one or the other makes sense for the time being.
Yeah. Any other questions? No other questions? Need a council directive?
That was as amended, wasn't it? From the junior high, or?
We will, so, yes, we will reach out to them to get that, get that corrected. It's a matter of, I, FEMA's, FEMA is not exactly quick and easy to work with. And so, we will do our best to get that through them. I would recommend...
I wouldn't recommend starting all over.
Yeah, I hesitate to start, to start over. This, this table is not the whole plan. This is a table of locations that are, have potential uses. And so, my recommendation would be to move forward with adoption. And then, I will include this among the errors to correct with FEMA before they approve it.
So moved to recommended.
I have one more question. One more question. So, so can, we can go over this next year or two? Is that not correct? We can revise this next year?
It's, 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 the lifespan is assumed to be five years.
Okay, all right. All right.
Now, with less enthusiasm. I need a motion in a second.
I think we have that, didn't we?
Did you get it down to the first and second?
Counselor Gorley was the motion, and Counselor Coleman was the second.
Okay, my roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Let the record show seven eyes, no nays, approval of resolution number 12 for 2022. Moving on to new business, request RCA for resolution number 11 for 2022, city manager position profile.
I'm so excited to be bringing the new profile to you this evening before your review and consideration. What we'll be looking for from you this evening is approval of resolution number 11. But first, let's talk about the position profile. I'd like to thank Legia Moll for her work in putting this together. It looks fantastic, and I think it really represents our community well. And thank you, Legia, for all of your hard work, because it looks just fantastic. So, a few decisions that need to be made tonight before we advertise for the position officially. First is the salary range, and you'll see in your packet on page 379 that we've listed several cities that have gone out for recruitments for their city manager in the last six months. And they also are, a few of them are really in our comparable city sizes. And we would use those in structuring a salary survey anyway. So first, it's the city of Staton, and their minimum range was 122 and topped out at 152. The city of Independence, 130,000, and topped out at 150. The city of Kaiser, which is a little bit larger in population and has a larger staff size, and urban renewal district is 135 to 168. The city of Fairview, 135,000 to 160,000. And so, we are recommending a salary range between 100 and 150,000 for the city of Sweet Home moving forward. So I wanted to get your feedback on that, and if you feel comfortable with that range or if you'd like us to amend it before we advertise for the position.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, did you say that all of these cities have recently recruited or looked to recruit a city manager? So we're going to have to be in line with what they're after if we want to try to find somebody?
Right. So the city of Kaiser just filled within the last few months. I don't believe that their city manager has even started work for the city yet. The city of Independence is finishing up their interview process later in the month of April, as well as the city of Staton. So we're, we will have similar candidate pools as Staton and Independence, because their cities are in this general geographic area and similar in size and nature. Probably more candidates that are applying for Staton would be applying for Sweet Home, because they're more similar types of communities. But we don't know until we put the advertisement out there. But yes, we would be competing, and we are behind those cities because their processes started a month or two before ours did.
I'm okay with the 120 to 150 range, personally.
I agree with the mayor. I think 120 to 150 seems average. What was the, what was Ray making when he left? I don't remember what the exact amount was.
Brandon, can you answer that?
Your last city manager was making 126,000, which was at the top range of that scale at the time.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I'm kind of seeing some head nods, but we'll move on before you're not making the official motion right now. The next thing that we wanted to bring to your attention is the experience level. I know that there was some discussion the last time we talked with the council of governments when they were here about what you were looking for in the experience, and you were kind of all across the board. So what we did was, we put that in on page 387, or page seven of the position profile. And essentially, what it states is that we're looking for someone with five years of increasingly responsible experience concentrated in finance, management, personnel, planning, police, or public works is required. So that, that gives you a broad range for a background with five years of increasingly responsible experience, not necessarily as a city manager. So we're casting wider, wider net. That doesn't mean you have to hire somebody that doesn't have as much experience, but that gives you a larger candidate pool to select from. But that is another area where you were kind of differing in your opinion, so I wanted to point that out, and that would be another area that we'd be looking for your feedback tonight. The third area is in the area, is with regard to residency. And there's no provision in the charter that requires residency within the city limits. And I know that there were a few of you that wanted to have local residency. What we put in the profile is, again, on page 387 of your packet, or page seven of the profile, which is residency within the Sweet Home School District boundaries is highly encouraged, but not required. So that's how we articulated that in the advertisement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I, I was one of the ones that was concerned about that. And my biggest concern is, how far are we going to let them live from Sweet Home? I mean, what's, what's the distance? Are we going to just let them pick a city in Salem or something? I mean, how are we going to determine? I, I think that they should live in the city limits. I mean, the, the school district limits, because I think they have a lot of things in the city that they need to be involved in. And if they live in, I don't know what the number is, I'm just asking. If there's going to be a number for them to be, how far they're going to be away. Now, that's a pretty big area in our school, school district. So I understand, but I just, I'm a little bit concerned about somebody living in Albany and being our city manager.
Is it, is it possible that we could address that by offering some kind of moving incentive if they moved into Sweet Home?
I wouldn't have...
Where if somebody has to relocate and they move to Corvallis, maybe we don't provide that?
Yeah. I could live with that, but I just...
Well, you may have somebody that's living in Lebanon. They, all they do, you know? But if they're living in Portland and hypothetically, and taking the job and, so you don't know, I think that's a little too far. So I guess...
If we get somebody from the east side of the mountain, they're going to stay there and, and come back on Monday and go back on Friday night? I don't know. I'm just, that's my concern. That's all I have.
And that does come out generally in the interview process, so you know what a candidate's intentions are. And then, you can base your decision on that, on, you know, who is your favorite candidate? And score them accordingly. And then, you can always encourage them to relocate to Sweet Home as part of the offer package that you present to them. But one thing you do need to keep in mind is that a lot of people are working nowadays. You got two income households, and you would, you may have two professionals, and they may have to pick a midway point to be able to, you know, so their spouse can find a position as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you did say that that's not a requirement in our charter, and we would have to change some sort of, something to legally be able to require somebody to live, so...
Yeah, there's, there's a question on whether you could legally require them to live in the city limits. I don't think that you could really do that, but you could make it a condition of employment, and there are other ways that you can structure it if that's something you really want to require, or not offer the position at all if they're not willing to locate in Sweet Home, so.
I just know that there's different employee laws, employer laws, and so some things you have to give a little bit because you can't demand or require somebody to do certain things for a job.
Right.
The issue with, like, having them in Sweet Home, I feel like it would lower our candidate pool by a lot. Like, we're going to need a lot less people if they're going to have to move here. But like, what if we said you just had to move here, like, within two years or something like that? Like, if they had the job?
I don't know. I think we're getting stuck in the weeds. That the package that you've prepared, or the outline you've prepared, is actually really, really good. And the most important thing is their skill set. That's what we're interested in, is somebody who is an outstanding city manager. And I think that's where our priorities need to be.
Mr. Mayor, and I think, moving forward with this packet, but then, being able to evaluate people as we interview them, we can consider those things, those options.
Mr. Mayor, I think the packet's excellent. I would go with it as it is.
I agree, and I also want to shout out to Legia. Awesome job.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment, which is not really related, but kind of. There's a line on page 386, "A short drive away, a world apart." And I'm wondering if we want to consider that for a new tagline for the city of Sweet Home, so that would be a future conversation.
Words, words of discussion.
We should give special credit to Blair Larson for coming up with that, because it is something that he needs to develop.
Okay, so, that said, any other questions?
As far as, I am not opposed to this, because I think we can make a decision. I've talked to you about it, I've talked to Christie about it, and I don't... My concern is that they're 50 miles away. But I think we can deal with that and get by that, and I'm okay with this, too. You guys did a really, Legia, you did a really good job. So, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we make motion to approve resolution number 11.
Second. I got that one.
Motion second, but roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
And Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Let the record show, we have seven eyes, no nays, approval of resolution number 11 for 2022 city manager position profile.
And then, Mayor, just one more thing. One of the things I'd like to find out from the council is what you're looking for as far as the executive search goes. So we can concentrate the advertisement in Oregon and Washington, or we can do a full nationwide search by advertising through the ICMA, which is International City County Management Association. So that's where a lot of city, professional city managers are members of ICMA. They would be coming from other states potentially if we advertise through that advertising means. It's about $500 to $600 for us to advertise there. So I'd like to just get some feedback from the council on whether or not you're interested in doing a nationwide search, or if someone's interested in relocating in Oregon, they're likely going to be looking in the same general areas, but wanted to get some feedback from you on that as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have a question. So if we go statewide and somebody wants to come from Georgia, are we going to be in a position where we have to give them the travel here and the room and board and all those things? Is that going to be, is that typical? Because I think it was the last time.
It is.
And we had a few that... And then, another question would be, where are we going to get the money to spend all that? Because it could be thousands of dollars.
I think what we did last time was we set a cap on it. So once we found out the candidate pool, and then we went through the first interview process and we got to the finalists, then we visited with the council and said, okay, we have X amount of people from out of town. Do you want to offer a travel stipend? And I think we capped it at $500, if I recall, and that was for hotel accommodations, travel mileage, whatever they had for expenses.
Well, I think unless somebody's really desperate moving from Midwest or East Coast out here, most generally, you're going, your pool's going to be out here anyway. You're rarely going to get people from Midwest, East saying, hey, I want to go to Sweet Home, Oregon. So you kind of, I think we can do nationwide, see what we get for a pool, and then just move on.
I agree. My heart says I want to be a Pacific Northwest snob, but it's only, I, I think we need to do justice and do a nationwide search.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, I think if we're going to, I don't mind just doing Washington, Oregon, but I think you have to add California to that, because so many people are leaving California. This might offer some really nice opportunity.
No, no. Unless they're, unless they're north of Sacramento.
Strike that from the record, please.
I'm sorry, but that isn't going to work.
Okay, careful.
So I see general consensus that we'll advertise with ICMA as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we, moving on?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, RCA for wastewater treatment plant application VR 22-01.
So this is yet another planning application that we are requesting council authorize as the owners of the property. The wastewater treatment plant is technically in a residential zone, and we already did a conditional use to allow that, that use to expand. What this variance is asking for is that we vary from the height restrictions and the fence height restrictions that are in the residential zone and apply industrial zone standards to this property when it comes to the building height and the height of the fences. So this request is for you to authorize the city manager to sign the application, at which point it will go to the planning commission for approval.
Any questions, counsel? Counsel directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move as recommended.
Second.
Motion second. On favor, my roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
On the record show, have seven eyes, no nays, approval of wastewater treatment plant application, VR 22-01. There is nothing on ordinance bills, reports of committees? Any committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, the Rural Development Initiative leadership team is having their suicide prevention workshop for the community on April 27, which is a council meeting, unfortunately, from 5:30 to 7:00. It is a dinner, so if anyone wants to go, they need to make reservations. And I think Legia has put that on our website, and the chamber will have it on their website also. Also, the leadership graduation is May 7, which is a Saturday, and it is a luncheon, 12:30 at the senior center. If anybody wants to go, we need to let them know that that will be happening. And also, we are going to have student art in the gallery. I'm going to pick it up tomorrow. I'm very happy about that.
Any other committee reports?
The ad hoc committee has been canceled for this month, and so we have work to do, but it just didn't work out in the schedule, so.
Mr. Mayor, oh, Mr. Mayor, I got word today that the athletes will be coming to the next council meeting. Is that correct? And I think we need to make a big deal of that for them. How we do that exactly, I'm not really sure. I don't know what, how, I think that's up to staff to figure that out.
Cookies, Dave, cookies.
But I think it would be, I think, I'm glad they're coming. It's never happened that I'm aware of, ever. So it's a big deal, and they had a good season, a really good season. So, anyway, I think we should make it, make them happy they came and not, you know? Anyway, so I'm looking forward to that. Oh, and they're having a meeting tomorrow. You'll probably be talking about that at the senior center about, yeah, and that's at noon.
Yeah, at noon, and then at 5:00 to 7:00 at the senior center after hours.
Okay, all right. That might be good for some of us to go. Just, just throwing that out.
Any other committee reports? Okay, I'll move on to mayor's report. I want to thank Counsel Gerson for sitting in for the chamber banquet. I heard you did an awesome job. Thank you very much. I want to say thank you from my fellow counselors and city staff for cards and support and prayers for my, my family. It meant a lot. I appreciate it, guys. My father's doing well, and I appreciate the support. A reminder for counselors, the statement of economic report is due the 15th of this month. So if you've not done it, I... So if you've not done it, I highly recommend you get that turned in because there is a penalty for that. Then they nail you for it. So if you don't know what that is or don't have it or need help, see Julie. Julie will help you with that. A reminder for our budget meeting, the 19th and the 20th is 6:00 PM so that we make sure we're here for that and we get that going. And next meeting I will be gone. I'll be turning it over to Counselor Gerson. I'm going to be out of town on a personal matter. So I know she'll do a phenomenal job. City manager report.
Just a few announcements. Just wanted to remind all of you that we are celebrating National Dispatcher Week. I won't make it, I won't make a joke, Legia. But I do want to acknowledge this, the hardworking staff that we have in our dispatch office. They are amazing individuals and we value and appreciate their work so much and want to thank them for their service to the city. Also, Saturday, April 16th at 9:00 AM, we are having our Easter egg hunt in Sankey Park, just a reminder to all of you. Also, on Saturday, April 23rd at 1:00 PM is our Arbor Day Community Event. And we'll be planting trees within Evergreen Park at 1400 Evergreen Lane. And finally, just one final announcement that ODOT has notified us that they're going to be closing Highway 20 fully between May 9th and May 22nd to repair some of the landslide areas between mile markers 54 and 57. We'll be getting that information out to the public and continually reminding everyone. But that, that is information hot up the press within the last couple of days, so. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Christie. Department of Directors reports. Any questions for our directors? Okay, any directors have anything they want to like to bring up? Okay, city attorney. Council business good of order?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I just wanted to offer a public apology to Mr. Snyder. A couple meetings ago, I said some things that could possibly have been misconstrued and I sometimes forget the weight of my voice. And so I was not implying that he was not doing his job properly. I just appreciate what he's doing. I know that we all have heavy lifting to do and so I just wanted to make a public apology.
Okay, thank you, Angelina. Nothing else on council good of order? We'll go ahead and adjourn at 7:03.
Yeah.